So this is Commissioner Quee, I am in transit, so I will be able to start the meeting and then join by video in just a few minutes.
Well, assuming Commissioner Quee, you're on the phone, then then you will open us at 10 a.m.
We will do.
Thank you kindly, sir.
So can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Okay, work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. First item is the county manager update. I'll turn it over to our assistant county manager, Monica Steele.
Thank you, Chair, and I really don't have much. Staff continue to work on getting things completed with the proposed budget to get sent out. And I will turn it back to you all because you have quite a few items to discuss. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Monica. Next item is the Lower Nahalum Watershed Council. That's on page three of the agenda. We have 15 minutes scheduled for this. And I will turn it over to our presenter.
Hi there, I'm glad I made it just in time. Can I get screen sharing so I can put up the presentation? Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. Here we go. So hi there, my name is Zach Mall and I am the Lower Nahalum Watershed Council's Council Coordinator. And every other year, we present a biennial report to the Clatsop County Commissioners. In the other years, we give it to Tillamook County because our geography crosses that that boundary. So here we go. The Lower Nahalum Watershed Council's mission is to protect, preserve, and enhance the Nahalum watershed through leadership cooperation and education. How we do that is we work with all the stakeholders in the watershed. And we do voluntary research, fish passage, riparian plantings, in-stream enhancement, and other forms of wetland restoration. We also do a variety of education outreach events, including our estuary cleanup and speaker series and explore nature hikes in the in the summer. Where we do it is in a geography that we call the Lower Nahalum, and that is all of the waters of the Nahalum watershed downstream of Humbug Creek. And you can see that Highway 26 is right here. And the line between Clatsop and Tillamook County is right there. And so we cross the border between the two counties and have a little corner of Washington County in our upper regions of the Salmonberry River. Just to give you a quick rundown of some of our expenses over the last two years, in 2020, we brought in about $330,000, $340,000. That was about a quarter federal income, about half state income, and the rest was made up in donations and other foundations and the like. And three quarters of that went into restoration activities in 2020. In 2021, you'll see that the numbers and the proportions are a little bit different. And a big part of that is that we were doing a lot more design work in 2021. And so getting ready to implement some big projects in the next couple of years. And so that work tends to have a lower price tag. And also you'll see that our admin expenses didn't particularly change in actuality, but the total expenses we put out were lower. And so our admin proportion was a little bit higher. But that's kind of the thing that between the two years and why there's a difference there. That said, we did a whole lot of work in the last two years with five different research projects, two pretty substantial design projects, a slew of restoration projects that we completed and just started. And also got some interesting collaborations going that I'll be talking about one of a little bit later here. And because we did so much work, I can't really highlight all of it. And so I pulled out a couple items that I think really give a good impression of what we've been up to and how it all ties together. So the first thing I wanted to bring up was this Nahalum Bay tide gate inventory. And this inventory, we got some funding from the Nature Conservancy to go through the Nahalum estuary and essentially identify and collect metrics on all the tide gates that are in that geography. And we were collecting this information to create a prioritization tool that will be used to both prioritize based on gate condition. And so how badly a gate is deteriorated, how poorly it's actually serving its purpose, as well as ecological uplift that can be gained from replacing or removing a particular gate. And what's exciting is that we identified a bunch of problem gates throughout the estuary and have already identified one that was doing absolutely nothing and isn't even on ag land. And so we're able to actually fully remove it and we're moving forward on that right now. But for an impression of the status of tide gates in the Nahalum Bay, this is one that we found that is on ag land. And you can see that it is heavily corroded. It's a heavy top hinge steel gate. And what you can't quite tell but get an impression of in this picture is that the bank around the gate actually calved off because it has so much reed canary grass on top of it. And it's actually blocking the gate as well. So this gate isn't preventing water from getting into the upstream fields. It also isn't draining properly, so those fields are staying flooded longer than they should. And the problem's only going to get worse with it in this condition. And so this is definitely a like a prime candidate for the kind of work we're looking to do. And I'm going to talk to the landowner about that one and some others that we identified. Another big piece of the work we've been doing is this cold water confluence large wood design project. And this project is aimed at providing habitat complexity. So just structure at these confluences of several streams and rivers that come into the mainstem Nahalum, where the contributing tributary has really cold water. And so that cold water is essential for juvenile salmonids to breathe, especially because the mainstem Nahalum hits lethal temperatures during the summer. So by providing cover in those areas, we give a space for juvenile salmonids to avoid predators in these confluences where they're already, the fish are concentrating because they can't be in portions of the mainstem. And so this is a really interesting project driven by the rapid bioassessment work that we did and I reported to you all about two years ago. And what's really neat is that we're actually moving forward into a final design phase for the Salmonberry River Confluence shown here. Because we have a really great private landowner who's interested in working with us. And we have a big collection of partners who are all engaged on reviewing these designs and making sure that they're going to be stable, that we're going to still provide access for recreation, et cetera. So really neat project, going to be moving forward to the next phase now and pretty excited about that. And then we did a bunch of restoration work and I wanted to highlight one of them, which is this Grand Rapids Creek in-stream habitat enhancement. And in this project, we installed large wood structures and beaver dam analogs because those types of structures help to pool water, sort gravels, and create that same habitat complexity I was talking about in the previous project, but higher up in the system. And one of the big goals of these projects is to create summer pool habitat for juvenile Coho and juvenile salmonids, where that water stratifies a little bit, so you get really cold water on the bottom, which is a great rearing environment for the juvenile fish. And beaver dam analogs are kind of a both hot topic and new tool in the toolkit in Western Oregon right now. And what they are is a series of posts driven into the stream bed and then woven with willow or spruce or whatever boughs you have around. And they pool up the water, as you can see in this top picture here, to create that good summer habitat for the Coho. But they also provide quality winter habitat by slowing the water down around them so that the fish don't get blown out of their streams into the mainstem where they then have to compete with larger fish and and then contend with those warmer waters. And also they encourage beavers to colonize the area because this pooled water provides cover for the beavers so they can hide from cougars and other predators that might like to pick off a beaver wandering around a small tributary. So here's an example of a beaver dam analog in the field. And you'll see the series of posts driven into the stream bed here. And they run up onto the bank and are woven through with hemlock and spruce and all their branches here. And that was immediately after implementation right there. And finally, I'm going to run into some of these, one of the collaborations we're working on. This collaboration is a collaboration between a bunch of the watershed councils and Tillamook Estuaries Partnership, encompassing most of the North Coast. So Tillamook County, up in the Clatsop County, we have all the watershed councils here all involved. And we're going to be collaborating to find ways that we can not be recreating work that each other are doing. And so the idea is that we all have small staff and small funding availability. And so if we can find ways to dovetail our efforts, we can get a lot more efficiency out of those efforts and I'll have more time to do the other projects that I was just talking about and provide the services that we're really seeking to provide to our communities. So it's a pretty cool effort. Everyone from the North Coast Watershed Association, the Canicum, both the Nahalum Watersheds, Tillamook Estuaries Partnership, and the Stuckin Eskom and Sand Lake Watershed Councils are all getting involved in this effort. Just really exciting. I'm about to wrap up here, but it's always important just to recognize the funders and partners we've had over the course of the two years. This is a non-exhaustive list. There are more than what I could fit on this page. And as always, we only get by with funding from a wide variety of sources and a bunch of great partnerships. So does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? I see we have a couple. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, could we talk about tide gates for a minute?
Yeah, definitely. I can, we can talk about tide gates. They're a great topic.
You have a couple of commissioners here who are into tide gates.
Oh, good.
Do you by any chance have a an estimate of what it costs to examine a tide gate? You know, just per.
That assessment?
Yeah, yeah.
So just the assessment was remarkably cheap, to be honest. So the assessment, all it was, was myself and one other person contacting all the landowners, getting all that permission to go to all those properties and then accessing them either by car and by, you know, gate on a farm or by boat. And so really, to be honest, the bulk of the effort that went into that process was the coordination with landowners and making sure they knew when and where we were going to be. Because I take it really, I take it very, very seriously, making sure that any of our ag partners know when I'm going to be on their property and where and that I have permission for it. So that was really the biggest expenditure. If I were to actually pull up the budget that we had for this project, this inventory took under $5,000 to do on our end. Yeah, it was incredibly cheap.
How many tide gates did you did you do an assessment on?
We were able to identify 13 tide gate units. Some of those gates are, you know, multiple, multiple pipe or multiple doored tide gates. And we were actually able to find several that we didn't even know were out there as a part of this process as well. And so that was pretty interesting. But again, it's mostly just paying for the staff time on this end. And the Nature Conservancy has the funding for doing this next prioritization phase, right? And they are actually doing this all up and down the Oregon coast right now. Because as we all know, the tide gate infrastructure is getting older. And with the state and federal regulations around fish passage that have that exist since a lot of these tide gates were installed, it's a huge cost to meet those obligations and the needs of our local producers. And so having a handle on just what's there is 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 a big deal. And so luckily, the Nature Conservancy has been taking that on to create that prioritization tool.
That's, that's great to know because we have been thinking about using some of our infrastructure money to be taking a look at this. And so, you know, if you were able to tackle 13 or so tide gates for $5,000, now here's, here's, here's a nitty gritty question. How much do you think it you spent on average restoring the tide gates?
Well, so that's a great question. Every single one is going to depend on the gate in question. But one of the critical elements of a tide gate replacement is that there's a big design process as a lead time, right? And so anytime you're replacing a tide gate and you're trying to both meet ODFW's fish passage requirements and the needs of landowner, you're going to have to do a bunch of hydrological analysis on what levels of inundation are acceptable, how that inundation will affect grass production, what that inundation will reach. And so I have a property that we're going to actually be likely removing the tide gate off of, where it's former ag land that was converted into into rural residential properties. And so there's no agriculture going on in that field. They have no need for the gate and they are excited about wildlife. And that alone, my estimate for the engineering work on the front end, just to pull out a tide gate is in the range of $130,000. And engineers are expensive, right? Like engineers are expensive. They've only gotten more expensive in the last couple of years. But just to remove a gate, not even to install a new one, you know, we're probably going to be in $250,000 by the time that project is complete. And for comparison, implementation, like installing the McDonald's slew muted tidal regulator that we did back in 2016, the installation alone was around $660,000. And that doesn't include the engineering that went into it on the front end. So there, it's an incredibly expensive prospect.
Wow.
Yeah, with with a year or more of lead time to any project you do.
Okay, just one more little question. Are there times, seasons of the year that are that are most appropriate to be doing these analyses?
The inventory should be done in the summer. That's when your tides are lowest. Down here in the Nahalum, a lot of our sediment is very soft. And so a lot of the tide gates have settled over the years. And so some of them are only visible on a negative tide.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Zach, it's good to see you. I would submit that you should investigate your schedule and ours and come to us more often than every two years because I'm very interested. I would offer a gentle correction to my colleague because almost all of us, if not every single commissioner, has been both active in and continues to be extremely interested in tide gates. We all realize how important it is for agriculture, wildlife, everything, freshwater. So I'm particularly interested in the North Oregon Coast Watershed's collaboration. I've hopped from, well, I've hopped around from meeting to meeting to meeting. Thank you. That's the right slide. For several years now, I can't keep up with all the meetings. What I would request is that when you're doing this collaboration, number one, you let us know so that commissioners who want to attend can, because we are very interested in this topic. And number two.
I am sorry.
That's okay. It happened to all of us, yeah. Number two, we're doing this collaboration around the issue of water, freshwater, stormwater, wastewater. And we've got some involvement of watershed folk, but you're invited to that. Contact me offline and I'll get you involved with that if you want to hear more about it. Thank you so much for your good work. I'm always delighted to hear from you.
Thank you. And I would like to just make a note that the collabor, the collaborate, collaboration that we're doing, a big part of it is a SWOT analysis where we're going to be having a contractor interview all the boards and all of the staff. And so there isn't a lot of ways for the commissioners to plug into that process at this stage. However, after we have finished this particular grant, this is actually going to be an OWEB grant, so long as they fund it. But after we've completed our process, that's the grant funded process, the collaborative will be meeting, I anticipate on a annual or maybe even biannual as opposed to biennial basis. And so.
Okay, we are your interested partners. We want to be involved in this. Please continue to involve us and inform us.
Definitely. We will keep you updated and I'm making a note that we want to invite you all in once we are established in our kind of structure.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Commissioner Webb, is your hand still up? Okay.
Courtney Malle, I just kind of a follow up on the inspection. I was curious about the culverts. How are you inspecting the condition of the culverts?
So for the culverts, you mean with with the tide gates themselves?
Yes.
Or just culvert in general? So with the gates themselves, we are just doing a visual inspection in this case, looking at the condition. If we can get to it, we're looking at the inside of the culverts as well and assessing what the physical condition of them is. Are they showing signs of deterioration? Are they showing signs of distortion? Is, are they bending? Are there, are there gaps? Are they being washed out around? Those sorts of things. So it's a visual inspection as well as recording details about size for use in fish passage assessment.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I know that in some of the Army Corps of Engineers inspections, the cities or counties or wherever are required to do TV inspections, so they actually have to put a little boat with the camera or remote control boat go through there and in video. And oftentimes in the interior, it's much different than it is on the exterior, exterior of the culvert. And of course, it all depends on what type of material that you're dealing with or what kind of instructions.
Exactly. And what I was surprised by is a number of these appear to be. So for instance, this one, I was unable to get to the inside of it, right? And it's entirely possible that this one resembles some of the other ones I saw in the Nahalum Bay where it looks like there was evidence that the culvert portion was starting to get warped, get, get, you know, be damaged by the weight of the material on top of it. And that a new tube was run through the old gate to reinforce it and make sure that you weren't getting disruptions and flow kind of thing. So it's entirely possible that this, this one has something like that as well. But it's hard to say. And a lot of them that we identified had doors at, at doors that blocked a jar or in some of the wooden tide gate cases were missing boards entirely. And so I mentioned that to each of the owners of the properties to make sure that they knew because, you know, that's their land. Yep.
Are you aware of any commercial type of inspection or like camera inspection for the interior of culverts or things that are, I mean, what what I've seen are just kind of, you know, homemade type of devices that people have put together. But are there some, 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 some better kind of products out there on the market that you can inspect these culverts?
I'm not personally aware of any. I can imagine, because I know that, for instance, for bathymetric surveys of rivers, they have, I was, they're, they're, they're an aquatic drone, but really it's a, you know, our sea boat with a camera and with sensors on it, right? And so I can imagine something like that could be used for culvert inspections as well. But I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
And so, you know, yeah.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Well, thank you very much, Courtney Malle. I appreciate the presentation. I agree with our fellow commissioners. We love to have more frequent updates. I think it's really good information and all of us appreciate being made aware of your efforts. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you for having me today. Appreciate it.
Have a great rest of your day.
You too.
We'll move on to our next topic, which is local economic impact on fishing. And Amanda Gladix from OSU Extension Service is here, so I will go ahead and turn it over to Amanda.
Thank you. Good morning. And thank you, Chair, Chair Quayle and Commissioners for inviting me to be here. I really appreciate the invitation. My name is Amanda Gladix. I work for OSU Extension and Oregon Sea Grant. And my position is an Assistant Professor of Practice with a focus on coastal, coastal fisheries. So I mostly work with the commercial fleet. And the request here was just for an informational presentation on the economic impacts of commercial fisheries to Clatsop County, sort of in light of the record breaking Dungeness crab season we have had this year. So hopefully I have brought some relevant info to you to share. But if there are follow up questions or things that I haven't addressed today, I'm happy to follow up afterwards. So yes, it does look like I can share a screen. So let me go ahead and share that. Are you guys seeing my slides? Okay, great. Okay, so I wanted to start. Okay, so I wanted to start with just, um, a little bit of background that you guys probably are already aware of, but, um, just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page that fisheries in Oregon are sustainably managed under fairly complex, um, regulatory structures. So, um, some of our fisheries are managed at the state level, some at the federal level, um, and some even by, uh, international treaty. So, um, lots of, uh, regulatory players, uh, in the game here. Um, most of our vessels, um, in Oregon in general and in Clatsop County specifically participate in multiple fisheries. So if a vessel is participating in the crab fishery in the wintertime, they're often participating in some other fishery, um, in other parts of the year. In common combinations are crab and pink shrimp, crab and black cod, or crab and salmon and albacore. Um, there's also some vessels in our area that, um, exclusively participate in groundfish fisheries, either whiting, um, Pacific hake or um, non-whiting groundfish like rockfish, petrali sole and others. And, but that's really over 90 species, you know, sort of managed in one fishery. So lots of different fisheries that people are involved in. And then, um, another kind of layer of complexity for our fisheries are that most Oregon seafood products have multiple markets. And so they're impacted by economic trends and markets on a lot of different scales. You know, they have a local market, maybe a regional or domestic market, and then many of our products are going, um, abroad. Clatsop County has regionally and nationally important fishing ports. So um, Astoria and Warrenton kind of get lumped as to one port in all of our, um, fisheries landings, reportings. So it's, you see it referred to as Astoria, but it really refers to all of our Clatsop County, um, landing sites. Um, and so in the state of Oregon, we have about half of the pounds that are landed of seafood products. And, um, roughly a third, a quarter to a third of the, um, value, the ex vessel value. So the dollars that are paid to fishing vessels for their seafood products. We're also nationally, um, important. So we, we often rank in the top 10 to 15 ports in terms of pounds landed. Um, and sort of in the top 25 to 30 in terms of the value that's coming, um, to that fleet. We have about 250, um, vessels that are homeported here and, um, in 2019, there were 300 unique vessels that landed fish in Astoria and Warrenton. So we have traveler vessels that might not be here the rest of the year, but, um, certainly deliver their products here. And I think it's also important to remember that we have a really important and strong connection with Alaskan fisheries. So we have between 80 and 90 Clatsop County residents that hold Oregon commercial fishing licenses and about 100 hold Alaskan commercial fishing licenses. So and that can be the same person. You can hold, you know, fishing license in more than one state. Um, but it really highlights, we do have folks that live here and exclusively go fish in Alaska. They might not fish here locally. Um, but those, um, the economic impact of that, um, of that effort, certainly we see here in our community. Okay, um, here we get into some charts. So I wanted to share with you kind of the breakdown of the, the value of seafood landed um, in 2021, which is the most recent year for which we have complete data. And sort of how that breaks out by the, the species or species management group. Um, and you can see really the, the increasing importance of crab. Um, if I'd shown you the, the figures like this from, you know, five years ago, crab was a much smaller slice of the pie and it's increasing, continuing to increase, um, in sort of the proportionate importance across, um, Oregon fisheries. So in terms of the state as a whole, it's almost 60% of the value of our seafood. Um, and here in Clatsop County, we do have a little bit more diversity in terms of the types of fisheries that our vessels are involved in. And so um, it's a little bit less than the overall state, but still, um, more than 40% of the dollars that are coming into our county in 2021 from fisheries. Um, we're from the Dungeness crab fishery. Other important ones are whiting, um, and groundfish, and then pink shrimp are really key. Um, overall in 2021, we saw, um, you know, almost $60 million being paid to fishing vessels, um, for their seafood products here in Clatsop County. So it's a pretty substantial contribution. Um, I was asked to sort of give some information about the crab fishery. And so I wanted to share, um, kind of just some general stuff and some context from last year. Cause I think it helps us understand what happened this year, um, and why we're seeing the record, record numbers. So this is, um, this figure is from the Oregon Department of Fisheries and Wildlife's, um, crab newsletter, which I'll share that file with you, um, if you want to do additional reading on this. But really it shows kind of the overall picture of our fishery and, and something that was really important last year was that the price was high. Um, but the amount of pounds that were landed was relatively low compared to, to most recent years. Um, so there was demand for Dungeness crab. And so people were willing to pay a higher price, but, um, the volume wasn't really that high. And so, um, there was in some ways some pent up demand coming into the 2022 crab season. And you can see that again in sort of the, how the price for crab changed through the season in 2021. So just for reference, our season really legitimately started, um, sort of in, in January last year. It was a late, late December opening. Um, with a negotiated price of $3.87 per pound. Um, and this pattern where you see a really high proportion of the catch landed early in the season, and then it drops off as crab get harder to find. Um, and then you see this increase in price, um, through the season as well. Again, as, you know, supply and demand, um, are, are mismatched. But we see these like, really, these are quite high prices, um, sort of towards the end of the, the season. Um, and what I have heard, um, was that in essence, the, the demand continued to be high. There was an interaction where other states where, um, people have in the past been able to source crab, either shortened their seasons or had more limited, um, limited access or also had low, relatively low landings. And so coming into the, the 2022 season, um, the, the processors didn't have any frozen crab to sell. They really needed that fresh product. And so, um, there was very little, um, back and forth or negotiation at the beginning of the season because everyone wanted the season to get going. Um, it was also the first time in many years that we've had a December one season opening. So we've had delays because of domoic acid, which is a naturally occurring biotoxin. Um, or, um, the crabs need to have a certain percentage of meat fill in order to get the season started. Um, or just negotiations over price that have delayed the start of the season in past years. And this year they got going right on time. Um, so this is, this figure is showing the pattern over, you know, essentially the last nine years of, um, pounds that are landed in the blue bars, um, with the axis on the right hand side. And then the orange, um, line is the value of that catch, um, over the, over the past nine years. And then the average price over the course of the season, um, is down at the bottom of each of those bars. Um, and you can see that, uh, this year is already just a record breaking year in terms of the revenue. Um, but really kind of just an average year in terms of the volume that's landed. So um, what we're not seeing this year is like a hyperabundance of Dungeness crab. We're seeing these market forces that, um, sort of all were the, I don't know, perfect storm maybe isn't quite the right, um, term, but came together to create a really strong market, um, and a relatively high price that was paid to fishermen. Um, so even though we're only seeing a partial year of data on for 2022, because the season still continues. Um, we're already seeing, yeah, record breaking revenues. Um, and I just want to highlight that, um, you know, statewide, we're, you know, over $60 million. I'm sorry, $80 million in, um, in crab landing revenue, um, and almost 22 million of that has come to fishermen, um, that have landed crab here in Clatsop County. Okay, um, but payments are, payments to fishing vessels, that ex vessel value is really just the beginning of the economic impact of commercial fisheries. And so, um, we, we look to our, our economists who do these, these economic models, looking at sort of the multiplier effect and how those dollars flow through our local economy. Um, and so I'm going to reference, um, some work that was done by, um, Eco Northwest for ODFNW using, um, landings from 2017. So it's a little bit of an old report, but it's the most recent available. And it really highlights, you know, the wide range of local businesses that, and entities that are directly connected to commercial fisheries. So just thinking about, you know, what types of businesses do business with commercial fishing vessels. You know, you've got things that seem very intuitive and obvious, like our hydraulic shops, machine shops, marine supplies, fuel, um, fabrication and welding, um, all the way to our car dealerships and our grocery stores that, um, you know, supply the, the food and, and supplies for our fishing crew as they're getting ready to go out to sea. Um, and so that means that, you know, that ex vessel value that's landed um, really expands in our local community. So from 2017, the statewide economic impact from commercial fishing, from about $150 million in ex vessel value. You know, that multiplies out to almost $700 million in total economic output, 7,000 jobs statewide, um, or over $350 million in labor income across the state. Um, and so roughly, you know, four to five times multiplier effect when you look at that ex vessel value. Um, so just for reference, you know, that ex vessel value for all Oregon fisheries statewide was about 205 million in 2021. Um, you know, so we would expect this total economic, um, output to be, you know, larger even than what was estimated in 2017. So what does that mean for our local economy? Um, so they did, um, break this out by port group. Um, so obviously Astoria refers to all of Clatsop County, um, uh, ports. But we're looking at, you know, um, um, really the, the largest share of the pounds landed, um, and, um, you know, $209 million in economic output. Um, uh, 1,400 coastal jobs, another 500 jobs inland. Um, and, um, and it's, it's really a significant impact on our local economy. I think it's also important to recognize this, um, this at sea and distant water group because that includes um, people that are fishing elsewhere and bringing some of that income back. And so we know we have that strong connection here in Clatsop County. And so some of that is likely also local economic impact. Um, there are some interesting challenges on the horizon for Clatsop County's commercial fishing industry. And I just wanted to highlight these. Really each of these could be kind of an informational presentation of their own. Um, but, um, as many of you are already aware, there's, um, efforts to move forward with, um, leasing for floating offshore wind energy and, um, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management just announced call areas off Southern Oregon. That may feel like that's not in our backyard and it's far away, but in many ways, our entire West Coast fisheries are very interconnected vessels that fish here or, you know, land product here might be fishing in Southern Oregon in many cases. Um, and also there are challenges with, you know, displacement of, of vessels that are homeported in Southern Oregon and Northern California as well. Um, you know, continued challenges with wildlife interactions, whale entanglement in the Dungeness crab fishery, continued evolution of the management there. Um, I don't think that issue will disappear anytime soon, but, um, our, um, our industry and managers are being very proactive and, and forward thinking about how to deal with that. Um, obviously global seafood markets and trade as we come out of COVID and, uh, well, in theory come out of COVID, but as markets continue to recover from that disruption. Um, you know, we just hosted Ambassador, Trade Ambassador Ty and our federal delegation to have discussions about, um, you know, things that they can do to support, um, the domestic seafood industry in the global market. And then kind of the ever changing, evolving, um, mer- cha- changes in the marine environment, um, with climate change and ocean desiccitation, some of the potential impacts on our Dungeness crab fisheries. So um, I think all of those things are larger scale than anything we can do right here in Clatsop County. But I think it's important to remember that broader context as we're making decisions about local infrastructure, um, local support, local decisions that impact our fishing industry. Um, so I'll stop there because I wanted to leave time for you to, um, ask questions. Um, and I'll stop my share so I can see you guys.
Thank you so much, Amanda. I see Commissioner Thompson has a question.
Thank you, sir. Amanda, uh, excellent as usual. Um, I really appreciate the work that you do to quantify and give us solid data. I have three issues. I want to echo what you said about wind energy, because what I'm told is that if, to the extent that fishing becomes more difficult in the South Oregon coast waters, we're going to see a migration of fishers up here to our fishing territory. What we think of as our fishing territory, because, well, people have to go where the fish are, right? Yeah. So there will be local impacts. Number two, um, the the Cape Falcon Marine Reserves are right out my front yard. And most fishers, as you say, heavily regulated actual legal operations almost all the time. Last night coming home again, I saw lights from crab boats in the marine reserves where they shouldn't be. Can you work with people to get an app so that when we see crab boats where they aren't supposed to be, we can just hit an app and contact. You know what? I can't, I can't, I want to help, but please make it easy. I don't know if that's your job, but I would ask you that. And number three, um, I just forgot. I just forgot. But if you could work on those two, oh, I know, green crab. Um, I've been reading about, uh, green crab as, uh, a danger to our domestic species. Can you, can you address all that, please?
Yeah, so, um, I, I think, I think you stated exactly what I had to think about, you know, the, the offshore wind. It's definitely going to be an interesting, um, challenge to the, the fishing industry and, and concerns really are around displacement from areas where offshore wind will, um, be happening as well as, um, you know, some, sort of the environmental considerations and potential sort of indirect impacts on fishing. Um, so yeah, definitely real concerns. And I encourage all of you to, you know, stay engaged on that, um, issue. Um, in terms of enforcement and marine reserve stuff, it's definitely out of my wheelhouse, but, um, that's certainly something that, um, the Marine Resources Program at ODFNW would want to know about as well as just contacting Oregon State Police and making a report. I think that's, um, likely the most direct way to respond at, at this time. Um, I think it's also important to remember that, um, commercial fishing vessels and other vessels can transit through marine reserves as long as they're not fishing in them.
They're, they're stable. They're not moving. Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then green crabs, um, again, a little bit out of my wheelhouse, but definitely a real concern. Aquatic invasives are a real challenge. Um, and we, we do have a specialist, um, within Oregon Sea Grant who's based on campus that works on aquatic invasives. And I believe he's quite involved with the green crab. Um, effort. So I can follow up with you individually and make sure that you have his, um, contact info.
Sorry about that. It was on mute there. Commissioner Webb?
Amanda, um, how is our local fish processing capacity in relation to, uh, to the landings?
It's a good question. Um, so in some ways they're quite closely tied, right? Um, so processors really depend on having steady supply of seafood product in order to keep their workforce going, um, and able to retain workforce year round and all of that, you know, the, the challenge of that. In some ways we are better situated than other Oregon ports because we do have this broader mix of species that are landed here and more a higher proportion of groundfish, um, which is a year round fishery as opposed to like dungeons crab where it's a very big pulse at the beginning of the season. Many times processors are stretched really to their limits to, to accommodate that initial influx of seafood product. Um, I don't know that I- I don't know that I have all the details on exactly how matched they are in, in relation to that groundfish fishery. That, that fishery is, has been many years where there's more seafood that is allowed to be caught than the fleet is able to catch. And the reason for that is because of considerations about rare species that they need to avoid. And so they're not able to catch the more abundant species. And so there's really actually quite a bit of room for that, the landings in groundfish to grow as well as trying to re, redevelop the markets for those groundfish. So it's, there's a lot of complexity around how not, how well matched the capacity of our processing sector is to the available fish to harvest. Is that, am I answering your question though?
No, I think, I think you are because, you know, we've, especially in relation to this, to the wind turbines, which, which have all kinds of environmental issues for me, but also the fact that they're going to be sending their electricity to California and not bringing it ashore in Oregon, which is, which is pretty annoying. But it, but I wonder if, if the, some of the southern coastal fleets will migrate north. You know, will we have the processing capacity to absorb their markets? So to absorb their catch? So I, I, maybe that's something we just kind of need to keep an eye on and, you know, and make sure that, that we're helping our port especially, you know, be ready for, 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 for this, what might be, what might be, you know, an, an increase in catch, which I would assume would be very valuable for us as an economy. So, thank you. This has been terrific. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have any other questions, comments? Yes, I agree. A great presentation, Amanda. Thank you so much for being here. I think similarly to the presentation on the watershed that we had earlier, it's good to have this regularly presented to our group as well so that we can keep tabs and know the status of the commercial fishing industry that is so vital to our community. So, thank you, Amanda.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the invitation.
Thanks for being here. Next item is the comprehensive plan update, Oregon's Kitchen Table Public Outreach. And I will turn it over to our Community Development Director, Gail Henriksen.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. And I'm just going to speak very briefly. Hannah, if you could give either Robin or Belen the ability to share their screens, please. And while you're doing that, just to give you a brief update about why we're here today. Back in February, your board instructed staff to do some more work on the outreach portion of the comp plan update as we begin to approach our final adoption dates. And so we worked and have updated our contract with Oregon's Kitchen Table. They are the same group that did our redistricting outreach just a few months ago. And so they are going to talk today and about where we are in the process, what our upcoming schedule is for public input events. And then also to talk to you a little bit about some input that they need from your board to help us move the process forward. And so with that, I will turn it over to either Robin or Belen.
Good morning, everybody. I will start sharing the screen here in a little bit. Let me see. There we go. Can you see my screen now?
We can, we can see it.
Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. Who wouldn't like to share a screen? Good morning, everybody. My name is Belen Vega. I'm here with colleague with Robin Teeter. And we're going to talk about the Clatsop County Comprehensive Plan. I'm going to give just a brief update, who we are, what is our mission here and the talent that we have for this project. And then the person who will facilitate this portion of the meeting will be my colleague, Robin. So sorry. So Oregon's Kitchen, Kitchen Table is a program of the Hatfield School of Government at the Portland State University. We create ways for people to share what they think about important issues with the decision makers. The project manager for this project is Robin Teeter and me, I will be as a project associate. So the Oregon Kitchen Table in this project is going to engage with the community and find different ways that we can get that important feedback that we need in order to take and have decision-making in the benefit of the community. So we're going to start with April, May. We're going to develop some questions for the public. And then we're going to start our, planning our engagement activities. In May and June, we will have community meetings onsite. We'll start with in-person meetings on May 19 and June 2. And then we have virtual meeting on June 14. Then we go also have between May and June, our online survey in English and Spanish. And then we have cultural specific outreach and engagement with the Spanish-speaking community members. By the end of June, we will provide with all the information that we gather with the activities and our community engagement, we'll provide a summary of community input to the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. So, and from there now, I will lead with Robin, who will be the program manager of this project.
Thanks, Belen. Good morning, Commissioners. I, I hate, you know, sort of following something as absorbing as fish. That was fascinating. I got to say, I learned a lot. We are really pleased to be able to work with Clatsop County again. As Gail mentioned, we'd done a little work with you on the redistricting project last fall. And we're back again to hopefully assist you in some public input, further public input, I should say, on the comprehensive plan. A great deal of work had already been done. I think you started in 2019. And then there was a little thing called a pandemic that may have interfered with some of that, some of that process. But we're also going to be building on some of that good work that's already been done previous to, to our involvement. So the question before you today, and hopefully you've had a little time to think about this already. I'm going to assume that you have. For us, because there are, there are 18 goals and that's a lot of information to, you know, sort of revisit since our, our process is going to be, you know, two in-person meetings and one virtual meeting and an online survey. There's, there's really some areas that, that we reckon you probably would want more public input than others. So our invitation is for you to identify some of those areas. I would say probably no fewer than three and probably no more than five for just reasons of, of getting deep in some of these issues. That would be the most helpful to you to hear from the public in order to make a decision regarding the adoption of the comprehensive goals or recommendations. So, you know, again, this isn't to limit you. If you, you know, if you have, you know, more than five that you really are particularly wrestling with, then of course we'll do our best to create a process that gives you good information that you can really use to make a, to make a sound decision. That said, I also want to, our hope is to be able to provide enough information to the public so they, they really, really understand, you know, what the details of some of these decisions are. So one of the reasons to, to limit it a little bit is so that we can go as deep as is helpful for the public so they can really understand what the, what the issues are and then provide the kind of feedback that's going to be the most helpful to you. So our hope is that in the next, say, 15 or so minutes, that you'll have a, a conversation amongst yourselves that I'm, I'm happy to sort of quasi-facilitate from, from my little square here. And, and coming to some kind of consensus about what those key areas might be. Again, I know that a substantial amount of work has already been done. And my hunch is that there's some areas where you might think that additional public input will be especially helpful to you. So with that, I would invite you to, you know, sort of have that conversation amongst yourselves. Or if you've, you know, you're sort of headed in that direction, maybe just let me and Belen know kind of what your, your thinking has been on that so far. And by the way, Belen's going to be taking some notes on this so that at the end of this 15 minutes, we'll talk back to you what we think we heard so that we can be real clear on the areas that you would find most helpful to be focused on. So I'm going to ask Belen to stop the share so that I can see you all. There you are. And I see a hand already. Commissioner Banks, is your hand up? Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess, colleagues, I am a little hesitant to circle back yet again on topics that we've already discussed, already established, already accomplished. So this, this question I feel is potentially for Gail in regards to, or Director Hendrickson in regards to, where are we at in the process? Because we have done a lot of work and I do not want to go backwards. I, I very much so do not want to go backwards. And so where are we at? And, and, and in that way, because I, I kind of misunderstood the assignment, I guess. I, I thought that we would be verbalizing concerns regarding the process and how to help structure the process, not the topics. And so I, I feel a little ill-prepared to be discussing, you know, topics of, like, future topics of concern, the ones that we have yet to address.
Commissioner Banks, to update you and your board on where we're at in the process. We are wrapping up our last joint meeting with the Countywide Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission on April 26. We'll be bringing the last of the revisions before the Planning Commission in May and June with the ultimate goal of having two public hearings on adoption in July before your board. As staff understood the assignment from, from the board back in February, we knew that we had to go out and conduct additional public input and make sure that we were reaching out to all demographics and, and all variety of constituents throughout the county to make sure that we were tapping into everybody's voices and opinions. So when we met with the staff from Oregon's Kitchen Table and we were working as staff with them, trying to define what we wanted or needed from your board to help us move forward, it wasn't really our intent to go back and I'm not going to use, I want to say relitigate, relitigate, but we're not litigating anything. But to go back and revisit all the stuff that we've talked about over the past several years. We just really want to make sure that we, when we're working with the public, that we're focusing on the things that are of most importance to your board and getting those, that feedback from the public. We certainly can change that direction based on what you want to discuss today and the direction you want to give us. But that, that was just how staff had interpreted the assignment back in February.
So I, I, I guess, I, I understand why staff would have interpreted that in, in that manner. It, it does make sense. I just, I, I firmly believe that we should not be circling back on topics that we've already exhausted. And so that's just, just my thought process. And, and in regards to moving forward, what, how can we? I guess my focus is, is how can we involve this group in our community discussion moving forward? So that we are not backtracking. Yet again, I feel like we've spent years on individual goals and I don't want to go back.
I hear you. I see a couple of hands up. Sorry.
I mean, I think Monica might want to add something, Assistant County Manager.
Well, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add that, that, that your question, Commissioner Banks, is what we're here to address now is when we go back out to make sure that we are hearing, because, because that is what staff heard is we, we heard that we want to make sure that we are getting all of those individuals who might not be able to attend meetings due to their different work schedules. We've also, you know, things have changed a little bit with the pandemic now. So we have the opportunity to go out and have in-person meetings. And Robin will probably touch on this at the end as well, so I don't want to steal her thunder. But we're also going to be, you know, again, providing an opportunity for individuals to, to provide input through a survey. And so just again, trying to look at all of the different ways that we can get that community feedback from all communities within our county. And the questions that Oregon's Kitchen Table has for you all today is to kind of focus, getting the information from the board so that they can have these meetings focused on what it is you are wanting to hear from your constituents.
Thank you, Assistant County Manager. I'm going to, I have Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Webb. So Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I echo Commissioner Bang's concern that we not continue hearing from the same people about the same issues because they've had their say and we've heard it and we've listened carefully and we appreciate their input. Now, what I'm looking at is to hear from folks that we have not heard from. That's a lot of business people. That's a lot of low-income people. That's a lot of BIPOC people. So I'd like to hear from those folks. The three issues that I have or for, urbanization, housing, community engagement and economic development, ecologically sustainable economic development. So that's four. I'll repeat them. Urbanization, housing, community engagement and economic development. Because when I look at the land use code that we have, it's, it's a long time ago. Yeah, 40 years. A lot has happened. There has been the development of all of these dimensions. And I want to stay updated on the folks who have not been heard from. I'm grateful. I heard wonderful community comments about the quality of your process. Thank you for being engaged with us. Does that speak to your request, Robin?
It's, it's very helpful, Commissioner Thompson. Thank you. And, and I also want to acknowledge again that there's, there's been a substantial amount of work done. And admittedly, my entry into this is somewhat later in, in the, in the negotiation process between Clatsop County and, and Portland State, Oregon's Kitchen Table. What I think I heard though, was what you just said, Commissioner Thompson, and that is it was a good process and there was a feeling that maybe there were some voices that had not been heard from yet. So in order to make sure that those voices are heard, there's another opportunity to sort of solidify some of the information that's already been gathered. So it isn't, and it can't be a, a repeat of what's already been done because that, that wouldn't be feasible. And it's an opportunity to sort of dig into some areas that, based on the data that you already have right now. If you have questions or would like, you know, further information or clarification or, you know, just, just to know more about what the public might be thinking in certain areas. And you gave me four right there. So I do find that very helpful. And yeah, that's a, that's, that's a helpful roadmap for us, for us.
Thank you, Robin. Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Chair Coyle. In my 35 years of doing a considerable number of comprehensive plans in the state of Oregon, I've never seen a process that took this long. And I completely support Commissioner Bangs in the need to move on and, and not belabor a lot of things that we have already put a lot of effort into with a great deal of citizen participation, I think. Usually at the end of a comp plan, the community outreach consists of going out with the total comp plan as recommended by whoever the decision makers are. And, and a comp plan is a very complicated endeavor. There are very few people in our community who understand what a comp plan looks like.
There are very few people in our community who understand what a comp plan looks like and who understand its use. Um, and so usually at this vage, phase of a comp plan, there is a public information component. There is a going out and saying, okay, folks, goals one through eighteen, this is what they look like. Um, this is a summary. Usually that happens in a series of meetings or in publications, uh, inviting public input. And it is, it is on about sixty percent public information and education and about forty percent public response. So I'm a little confused that we're once again talking about surveys. I'm sorry. I'm, uh, statistically invalid surveys, I'm real tired of in this county. And, um, and I, I really don't want to be condoning any more of those. Um, but I think what we're facing is the need for a strong public information program. Uh, and thank you, Commissioner Bangs, because let's get this done as quickly as possible. And, and I honestly have no more suggestions about what to emphasize. Because I don't want to emphasize anything. I want to say, this is what the comp plan looks like. Um, it's, it's not set in stone yet. The county commission has not blessed it completely. Uh, and this is what it is. And please tell us what you think. Um, but please, no more surveys and very careful public communication. Thank you.
Commissioner Bangs?
Uh, thank you for that, Commissioner Webb. Uh, so I, I'm thinking just of the thought process moving forward. And I, I agree that we could break this up into, um, palatable sized pieces, uh, groupings of, of six maybe and present it to our community in groupings of six. This is where we're at. Um, give them the informational, uh, ask for their, their input and then do the next group of six. This is where we're at. Ask for their input and six, twelve, eighteen, look at that. Um, next group of six. This is where we're at. We are requesting your input. Um, I'm not so against surveys, just because I know the working class really struggles with getting to a meeting. Um, and that is the majority of who I represent in our community. And so I, I am going to ask a few questions in regards to making sure that those surveys are valid and, um, useful. That Kitchen Table uses in order to prevent, um, entities or groups from outside of our county uh, volunteering information for decisions to be made within our county. That would be the first question. And then my second question is, what is the preventative measures of Kitchen Table of making sure that we don't have one individual biasing our data by repeated, um, repeated, uh, surveys? So you have one entity or, or, or person choosing to input an example seventeen surveys to bias the data. So I, I'm just curious about how we, moving forward, can prevent, um, biased data coming out of, out of this process.
I'm going to attempt to answer that in a, in a, um, less in-depth way than you will need later, Commissioner Bangs. But, um, in terms of the biased, uh, survey or someone sort of taking the survey over and over and over again, um, I'm, I'm not familiar with the technical aspects of the software that, that Oregon's Kitchen Table uses. Um, however, most, most surveys are set up so that you can, you can only use one email address per response. Now, if you have many different email addresses, I suppose it is possible. Um, or you have lots of friends who will let you use your, your, your email, um, to do something like that, in, in which case, um, I'm not sure how we would, how we would address that, but it's certainly something that I can ask, um, the technical folks. Um, in terms of in-county residents only, you know, it, it is self-selected. It, it, there is a question about what their residence is. And we do also understand that there are some people who actually don't live in Clatsop County but who, you know, may spend some time there and may, may not be full-time residents. And we'll, we'll try to separate those respondents so that we know who the full-time residents are versus those, um, that are not.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, sir. Um, well, I appreciate the idea that we want to move forward. I'm all for that. I don't think we're cooked yet. I think that what I've seen is, um, I would say some folks who have used our process as a platform and a megaphone to develop a narrative that may be echoed in an echo chamber kind of way. I need to hear from the folks who did not feel comfortable or able to fully participate. And I selected the mo- what I thought were the most significant dimensions, and I'll just refer to them. Urbanization. We have increasingly urbanized areas in our county. And I don't think we know how to handle that yet. As a, as a community. Housing, we all know housing's an issue. Community engagement. We've had a particular model for community engagement. O K T provides us with an enhanced and in my mind improved methodology for community engagement. And I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Webb's expertise and her criticism. On the other hand, I need to hear from people that I know were made to feel uncomfortable and unable to participate in this process. I have heard directly from them repeatedly and frequently despite the best efforts of our staff to include them. Because there has been some, um, uh, I would say unfortunate dynamics. And I am looking for a community engagement process that helps us move forward to have a more positive, more constructed, more represented, fairer, kinder, gentler, all of those good things, smarter, wiser, community engagement process. That's what I'm looking for from this. And in terms of economic development, that's the engine that drives our county. I haven't heard much about economic development as we've gone forward. I've heard a lot about a lot of other issues from folks, many of whom have, as I've said before, adequate and stable income. Not being particularly kindly disposed to take the point of view of people who do not have adequate and stable income, nor the businesses that have to be successful in order for us to have an adequate and stable tax base and households with adequate and stable income. So that's why I want to move forward with this. I hope my colleagues will agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Bangs?
Um, I have no problems with, you know, those topics that Commissioner Thompson has presented as something that we need to dig deeper into. Um, I feel like they're all on, on all of our plates right now. And so maybe somebody has, um, a thought or an idea, uh, for, for the county moving forward. I'm fully open for that type of process. Um, what I would be very adverse to is uh, something that occurred in December of, or winter, I don't even know if it was December, but winter of twenty-twenty, where we had a open town hall type forum, um, for one goal that what I would say was a completely biased situation. And so I am just asking, and I, I'm sure Director Hendrikson can recall which, which town hall or which open house that was. And I just would not like to see a repeat of that. Um, and, and I would like us to be able to just keep, keep pushing forward um, and not get stuck in the weeds on singular goals that have already been exhausted.
Thank you, Commissioner Bangs. Any other comments, questions? I, uh, happen to agree with Commissioner Thompson. I think of all the voices that have been at the table during this process. Probably the economic development part is in the one that has been lacking. And so if there is an effort to try to reach out to the development community, to businesses, I think that's a good thing. Commissioner Toyoka, do you have any comment?
No, nothing. You mean, everyone's pretty much, uh, said what's been on our minds, so don't need to enhance anything else.
Okay, so how do we, what, are we getting, giving the direction that you need here?
I, I think so. I think so. So, I, you know, and I, I hear a lot of, um, uh, commitment to honoring what's already been done. And, and it is, you know, it, it is, it is not a process that can be replaced, nor, nor should it. Um, the opportunity is to, is to, is to build on the knowledge that you already have. Um, and to use, um, I'm going to borrow Commissioner Thompson's words, you know, to make sure that the process is positive, constructive, representative, kinder, wiser and smarter. That's a, that's a pretty nice sort of portfolio of guiding principles for any process going forward. Even if it's sort of a, you know, just a, um, you know, a confirmation, if you will. And, you know, people may have been missed in that first round. And I hear some, um, you know, some concern that maybe we want to loop back with some, with some particular groups. Um, and that's something that we've definitely been in contact with, um, your staff team there at Clatsop County to ensure that we are making, making welcome the voices, not just inviting them, but really welcome them into this process. Um, I've heard economic development mentioned a couple of times. I'm going to, I'm going to, um, I'm going to assume that's an area of consensus unless it's not, unless I hear from you right now. Um, and, um, you know, in the, the housing issue, um, I know you've already heard a lot of data on that. The opportunity here may be to, um, I think as Commissioner, uh, Webb had said, is to go out and, in, and let people sort of respond to what some of the recommendations are al- already. That is part of the public information, um, effort for sure, but it also may generate some new thinking, some confirmation of what you've heard, or maybe even some divergence, and once people really understand what those recommendations are. So it, it is, um, if it's done right, and I, and I hope that we will, um, do this right. It's sort of a dialogue so that you can, um, make sure that what you're hearing is in fact what was intended, um, by the public at large.
Thank you, Robin. Commissioner Bangs, did you have your hand up for, you did? Okay, Commissioner Bangs and then Commissioner Webb?
Um, I, to, to kind of dive in just even more specific, I would be very curious to hear and understand what folks feel is a limiting factor to development. Be it homes, be it business, be it small business, what are they seeing in their personal lives as a limiting factor to, that is preventing, um, either the county or themselves from moving forward or growing bigger? Um, I'm really interested in, in that aspect because I feel like it'll hit on housing, it'll hit on, um, economics. And it could even potentially hit on, um, our childcare concerns. So I, that is something a little bit more specific, I think, to dig into. Uh, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
I, I'd like to, um, to reiterate support for the six-six-six theory, Commissioner Bangs. I really, really like that idea. Eighteen goals together at one time are, what's the word? Overwhelming. But I really, really like the six-six-six idea. I've never, I've never practiced that before, but I really, really like the idea. So thank you so much for that. Um, also, uh, you know, one of the things that, that we do in Oregon particularly well is voting with paper. And, um, I would like to see something, uh, that is not computer-based in terms of a survey. Um, I think you all know that I've been an advocate for a long time of some kind of an annual survey of our citizens. Um, but this might be a technique that we could use rather than a computer-generated. I just, I find it very, very difficult to defend a computer-dated survey, uh, on a statistical basis. Um, so maybe in an effort to get to different parts of the county as so much of our comp plan really relates to, to different places. Um, uh, maybe we could entertain something that, that was more paper-based. Um, but I love six-six-six, Courtney. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I, I suggest we rename the six-six-six. I don't think that one will fly, but we can figure out something else.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chair. I was, I was really having a moment there. I'm like, I'm thinking mathematically, but when we put it that way.
Yeah, the, we, we can call it the, the thirds. We're going to, we're going to do this to the thirds. Um, I, I appreciate that. And, and I just wanted to jump in real quick about the written survey. And, uh, that is absolutely, um, an important observation that we have. You know, some people are very adept with online surveys, um, and some people are not. In a, in a significant population, whether it's a population that doesn't speak English as their first language um, or, you know, what have you. Um, we will have written surveys. Uh, that is always a part of our process, is to make sure that written surveys are also distributed um, as much as, as possible through institutions, through, um, community gathering spaces. We do have quite a little outreach, um, project planned that I'm sure Gail would be happy to share with you. It's, it is in process. And that also means, um, written surveys for non-English speakers as well, which is really going to be Baylen's, uh, area of, of focus. So know that even if there is an online portion, that we also will have, um, paper available for those who prefer that.
I see Baylen, you had your hand up there.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, what Robin said regarding the survey. So the idea is getting to the people that, um, usually won't be able to get, um, we, we, we cannot reach to get this information. Uh, so what we do with the service, if they go through a process where they will reflect in the language that it has been written, that will reflect, uh, reflect a sixth grade in English and a third grade in Spanish. Like that is more accessible to the people, um, regarding, um, the language that we have there and the questions too.
Yes, thank you, Baylen. Commissioner Bangs, you had your, another question?
Um, yeah, I just was going to follow up the written survey. It would actually be very, very helpful in preventing the dataset bias that I was discussing. Um, and, and that is a concern of mine. And so just having it as a written survey does, does help with the direction of, of my thought process. Um, and I, I do appreciate, uh, things being user-friendly. I did have a question though. Are commissioners able to see the questions prior to, um, release?
That's our intention, is to, to give you a chance to, to review them, to make sure, again, that it's information that you're going to find useful. This really is about what you will find useful for your decision-making process. Um, and a, a draft of what those questions are definitely will be given. I don't know how that happens in your, you know, sort of staff, um, board, you know, meeting relationship. It, I will say this, probably the turnaround time isn't going to be a lot just because the survey, we're trying to get it into the field, um, in mid-May. So, you know, if we, we give you the questions, then probably the turnaround time is going to be a little tight. But you will definitely have a chance to see them. And I also am cognizant that our thirty minutes are, are kind of, um, ticking away here. And I don't want to take up your valuable time, but if there's any other, um, I heard, you know, a, a, a framing question that I found really helpful, and that is, what is a limiting factor to development that is preventing the county um, or residents themselves from growing or going forward? That can hit many different goals or many, you know, a myriad, uh, the recommendations that have been proposed already. So if that's the kind of thing that actually might be helpful, rather than just revisiting specific, um, recommendations that have already come through. We can do both and, but I'm just saying that that might help address a number of them at once.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. Any other comments, questions? Well, this is good discussion and, um, appreciate the input. Well, this is good discussion, and I appreciate the input, and thank you, Robin. Any, any other questions for us?
Um, I have just one last request, actually, and that is um, with the public outreach process, it will be really helpful if, you know, once we get the survey done, and both written and the online survey, um, if you could share it with your own networks, you know, that your county staff will be working hard to make sure that gets to all the all the residents that they have databases for. But oftentimes, people will pay attention more to what comes from individual um, commissioners, rather than what comes sort of from a listserv. So if you would be um, sort of involved in that community, that also gets to the people that you are worried have not had a voice in this process before, or didn't feel comfortable with the process, that you can sort of push that out to them and invite them to the meetings. We're having two in-person meetings, I think you already know, and then one virtual meeting. Um, and then that's a summary report, of course, will be made available to you before the um, end of June. And that's all. My, my final word is um, thank you and gratitude for your partnership in this important process.
Thank you, Robin. Uh, thank you, Baylen, and appreciate uh, your assistance in this, and look forward to meeting again.
We look forward to working with you. Thanks so much for the invitation.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Next item is the jail relocation project guaranteed maximum price, uh, in amendment number four. And I'll turn it over to our jail commander, Thomas Teague.
Morning, Commissioners. So as you know, I'm Lieutenant uh, jail commander here for Clatsop County. Um, Sheriff wasn't available to give you a brief on this, so I believe you have a summary uh, that uh, David Difanbach wrote up. Um, so uh, do you need me to share my screen, or do you have that in front of you?
We have it. Is it, everybody okay with what we have in the packet, or do we want to?
I think it's, it's the same thing that I, I would share.
Okay, perfect. Now we're good.
Okay, so little update. Um, so as you know, you know, jail bond passed in, in twenty eighteen, and uh, we hired Cornerstone Management Group as our project manager. Um, DLR Group as our architect, and Emmett Construction as our contractor. Um, the last uh, amendment that the board approved uh, was in February of twenty-one to set the GMP at the twenty-three million seven hundred and forty-eight and change, and then the sub, substantial completion date of May third. Um, so the request is to increase the GMP and to extend this uh, substantial completion date. Um, it will increase uh, six hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven, and the substantial completion date will change to August twenty-fourth of, of uh, twenty-twenty-two. Um, we anticipate that the interest from the revenue uh, of the bond funds will offset the increase of the guaranteed maximum price. Um, we still have reached our goal of a hundred and forty-eight beds, which, which is what the bond went out for. Um, construction has been um, clipping right along. It's coming along very well. I don't know if any of you have been out to, to visit the facility, but uh, all the walls are up, floors are in, uh, all the electrical, mechanical, um, electronic security systems are now going in, uh, getting ready to start painting as well. Uh, the temporary roof is in place so that all the interior stuff can happen with it. Uh, it's, it's looking really good. Uh, I believe there's some photos attached that, that David had taken. Um, so the the lion's share of this amendment is coming from the seventh classification um, that we needed to help operate the facility. Um, basically, right now, even with our small jail, we have nine different classifications. Um, what those are for is for, to make sure that we put the right people in the right places, avoid conflicts, um, behavioral issues. Um, I'm sure as the commission knows that we are currently experiencing a lot of um, mental health type issues in the facility. Um, having these classifications is crucial in managing that. So um, we're hoping that the board will agree with us on this, but um, I don't really have a lot to add to that. Um, I can, there should be, you should have the uh, current project totals attached to that. Um, probably Assistant County Manager Steele can answer more on the financial details of it, if you have questions about that. Um, but yeah, that's it in a nutshell. So if you have any questions, fire away.
Great, yeah, thank you, Lieutenant Teague. Um, and I note that our Chief Deputy Paul Williams is here as well. Uh, Dave Difanbach has also joined us, and then of course Assistant County Manager Monica Steele can answer questions. I see Commissioner Webb has a question.
I'd just like to say that that this has been one of the smoothest major public works projects I have ever been involved with. You guys never came to us and said, ooh, COVID is making us crazy. Man, you just, you just kept your, your foot on the pedal. Uh, and um, the, the fact that uh, that you've had to come back to us with with the kinds of things that all public works projects have, you know, you had so few of them. I mean, there were, there had been so few change orders here. It's just been terrific. Somebody, and probably more than one body, has done a terrific job of husbanding this project through. Uh, I just say kudos to all of you, because this has been a seamless um, wonderful project. And I am looking forward to all of us getting in a van and going out there and taking a look at this beauty. Uh, and um, and just, I, I hope our citizens can appreciate the, the expertise and the hard work that has gone into this very smooth project. Thank you so much, guys, really. Well done.
Yeah, here, here, Commissioner Webb, I agree. Who wants to take the credit for that?
Oh, boy, that's a shared credit there. I, I'm gonna put a lot of that on the sheriff and Monica, really, and, and our project manager, Emile, um, for really bringing things together and making sure that things were staying on track, even when we had, you know, pseudo-crisis. Um, we've worked through it, so.
Yeah, job well done. Commissioner Banks?
I, I think Commissioner Toyoka had it, had his hand up.
My apologies. Commissioner Toyoka?
So I couldn't find the little uh, raise hand button, so I raised, I physically raised my hand.
Perfect.
Hey, uh, just comment on the jail, you know, it's had the pleasure of walking through with the sheriff, and I think that what we need to stress to the public, our constituents is, you know, is, it's not just that it's a nice new facility, that we're dividing the population, we're, you know, we're satisfying, you know, the standards for the jail, but I think that what also needs to emphasized is the flow and the processes that went into the design and the, you know, the, the structure of the jail. Uh, I think the ultimate goal is to make sure you don't have repeat guests, you know, and the, the design and processes are implemented in the new jail to help facilitate that. And I think that's important for, you know, not only you at the jail, the sheriff's office, but as us as a county, to get that out to all the constituents, is that this is not just a, you know, holding facility. This is a part of a process to ensure that people, you know, are properly handled, but the goal is to make sure that they, you know, don't come back. You know, there are systems that can help people, individuals out seek treatment, seek ways of, you know, rehabilitating to not come back. And I think that's been lost in the translation, but needs to be emphasized, especially to our constituents. So it's a lot of money, and it, but it's well worth it, I think.
Yeah, I, I would agree. That's the part of this that I'm most excited about as the jail commander, is that um, with the technologies that we'll be able to put into the building, um, and the programs that we can get in place to help AICs actually improve and leave our doors better than when they came in is great. So um, again, that's, that's what I'm most excited about.
Commissioner Banks? You're on mute.
That's not helpful, is it? Sorry about that.
Read lips.
So the GMP amendments that we're discussing today, the six hundred and nine thousand dollars, um, those are not for um, outstanding construction increases or anything like that. Can you circle back and explain that to me again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so like you said, the lion's share of this, I believe it's over half, um, maybe Monica can help me out with this, but um, is for that, putting in that seventh classification. Uh, so basically what we did, so inside the new construction, um, there's four classifications, or that was, the original design was four classifications. And we felt we needed another classification to help us manage our population. So we took one of those classifications and divided it into, to have two different classifications inside that same day room area. Uh, and it will help be able to divide up and manage the population immensely. Um, like I said, currently we have nine classifications, uh, nine different cells with um, two uh, additional observation cells in our current facility. The new facility um, with adding that, that classification will bring us to nine, or I'm, I'm sorry, to seven classifications, which is less than what we have right now. But each of those classifications are, we're able to hold more um, individuals.
So, so it is a kind of a change in construction costs, is, is what I'm circling back to, correct?
Yes.
Because when you're speaking to classifications, I'm like, man, I don't understand what you're talking about. I mean, you, you could be talking about certifications for a human, and I wouldn't, you know, but when you're talking, I'm wanting to just circle back and, and, and make sure this is associated to construction.
Yes, it is, sorry.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
They'll speak, sorry about that.
I see that Commissioner Thompson has a question.
It's, it's more along the lines of a comment. Um, I've actually worked as a psychological counselor with adult male offenders, and I'll tell you um, the reasons for incarceration. It is to protect the community, it is to punish, but it is most importantly to rehabilitate. It is to make people whole and healthy, contributing members, because we can't build enough prisons if people don't improve as a result of being in them. So I have goosebumps as I listen to you, because I'm remembering the the men with whom I have had, I want to say profound touching conversations to help them be seen and heard and respected, to help them have an idea that they can contribute in a positive way. They have something of value to their community, and whatever caused them to make those bad choices before, there's hope for them. So when I saw this, I remembered all of those men, and there's heartbreak, there's hope. Ultimately, you're making people whole, healthy, contributing members insofar as that's possible. I'm so grateful that we as a community have created the building, the bricks and mortar, and staffed it with people who can make this kind of difference, so that we have both compassion and consequences, so that we have a stronger, healthier community. Thank you so much.
Great. Love hearing that.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll just jump in uh, to Lieutenant Teague's comments, and so as he mentioned, the lion's share of this is for the additional classification, which is almost four hundred thousand. And then, as you're all aware, um, this facility sat empty for a number of years and unused, and so even after, um, you know, we went through and, and took a look at some things, um, and then it has continued to sit there. There were some additional costs, such as some overhead doors, um, that originally we didn't anticipate needing to be replaced, that, that need to be replaced to, to be safer and um, better utilized. And so all of this GMP addition is covered under um, the interest revenues that we've earned on our bond monies. So this isn't coming from additional um, general fund or special project resources.
Thank you, Monica, and uh, thank you, Lieutenant Teague, and um, appreciate all of the hard work from everybody that's been working on this project. Uh, it sounds like some people have already seen it. I'm waiting for my formal invitation to come get a tour, um, but I'm anxious to to see all the work that's done, and, and thanks again for, for your efforts.
More than happy to take you out there anytime you'd like. Just give me a call.
Sounds good. And that is the last item on our agenda. Um, any other comments for the good of the order? Commissioner Thompson?
Um, we're done with labor negotiations, right?
Um, well, what are you referring to? We have several different bargaining units, and some of them have contracts that um, expire at the end of the current fiscal year. Um, and then we are having conversations um, in regards to the staff assistant positions with AFSMI. So which, which group are you referring to?
Well, um, all of the candidates for election, I'm presuming, got an invitation to uh, participate in a candidate's forum with the AFSMI local today, and um, I assumed we were done as a county negotiating, so I said, sure, I'll come. But then it occurred to me, oh, wait a minute, am I legit in that? Is it okay to do that?
I, I will let uh, county council speak to that, but you know, as long as you're not discussing anything in regards to um, the, the salaries or the positions or anything like that.
Yes, we don't have, I, I, I don't have any concerns, legal concerns or otherwise, um, Chair and Board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, if not, thanks, everybody. Have a good rest of your day. Talk to you soon.